Planning board meeting for April 23, 2024. We're going to open the meeting. Amy is not with us as clerk, so asking Crystal to take notes.
Yeah.
And serve as clerk tonight, if that's okay with everybody from the audience. Any objections?
No.
Okay.
No objection.
Well, since I didn't have three minutes from four months ago, or if I did, they don't have them. I don't think we have to. I'm trying to move the real estate stuff.
Oh, man, it's Barry.
Barry's being stepped.
No.
Oh, my goddamn chair. Thank you.
Minutes.
No. Minutes not available, so we won't worry about them at this point.
For August of 2023, so we'll table that.
All right, that's the beginning.
Yes.
Uh, we have a few housekeeping items because this is our first meeting of the year. My right-hand lady, Mary, serves as the secretary to the board, not the clerk, but the corporate-type secretary. And she helps me by tucking the papers. We need to keep them in front of me normally.
Okay.
Uh, John Coffin has been the deputy for the past few months. If he's willing, I'd like to appoint him as deputy. Absolutely. And since John has an item coming up before the planning board, possibly. If I'm not here, he couldn't be deputy that night. I want to appoint a second deputy, Brendan Candy. Okay?
Okay.
So either of you are my deputies and Morgan will take over the meeting. I believe we have no old business because we haven't met in months, so we can commence with that.
Okay.
No new business. We have one special use permit in front of us, apparently.
Uh huh. And at this point, I will recuse myself from the process.
Okay.
For reasons known to the fair.
Thank you, Mike. Truthfully, I did not look at this today because until Hank phoned me, I even forgot we added you. So does anybody have any comments on what they've seen in this package?
Does anyone have a comment? I haven't shown anyone these.
We're changing from law office that was Clemente's to food service, which is a special use in roadside business, so that's no problem.
Yeah, one little question. On number eight of the report, is there any public transportation services available at or near the site of proposed action? Yes. What public transportation do we have? It's on the, um...
We haven't read it yet, right?
No, but it's on the environmental assessment form, A or B. Number eight, B, yeah. I'm just supposed to...
Actually, I think you got eight B and eight C next step because it is on a bicycle route. And eight A, it's no public, B, no public transportation. I think probably you'd want to change. You have your environmental impact in front of you, but you can advance.
Page two is free. We aren't through that yet, so I think that's the sort of the point. Now, there should probably be no, no, and a yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're gonna read, yeah, we're gonna read through it back.
I do. If that's okay, why don't we make those changes now?
Okay. The one numbers?
Eight, A, B, and C. There'll be no, no, and yes.
Well, it could be yes. Yes, no, no, or no. Yes, no, no, yes. Because it will increase traffic substantially.
Substantially.
Yeah. So we should read.
Public transportation will be no.
We should have to read it.
No, no, yes, Barry. Okay.
Want to go through?
We will, but Barry brought this up, so we'll find it's wrong.
Yes, always.
Okay.
No. Okay, all right. You know that we didn't. It will set some.
Or the dog question.
Did you do a parking analysis? How many square feet of, uh, into you have and how many spaces you need?
Me? No.
Uh, Jocelyn had maybe Valerie's out of the country, so that's what.
I'm here. I needed her, Casey.
Jocelyn asked her to do that. I was wondering if anybody's done it.
Now.
How does parking relate to square footage? What is the formula?
There's a formula in the zoning.
In the zoning.
Need so many spots for so many square feet of business.
Correct.
But we can figure that out. Unfortunately, that area is not like Main Street, where you have.
Right.
And. And I don't think you'd have to use the full floor because your storage and so on, and your prep area shouldn't apply. But we can get that done for the next one. You've made the lot bigger. It looks like you've got quite a bit of space there, so. And there's nothing happening on the second or third floor. Any changes? That's staying apartment?
No.
No changes. Or no. You're answering me no or no changes?
Say that again.
Did you answer my question as a no? There's changes or there are not changes?
There is. The apartments ought to leave on.
Okay.
How many are there? Six.
And that parking is in the back, so that doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing.
Separate office building.
Right.
We are planning to pave the parking lot as well.
Yeah, that'd make it easier to mark spots.
Yeah.
On the gravel, it's not gonna stay.
No, no, it's the right thing for the building.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's something we'll need to have before we set up, uh, before we, uh, have the hearing. But, um...
What parking?
Does anyone have a problem knowing what parking is there that looks adequate? So we get the numbers going forward with the seeker?
Are you asking the board?
Yes.
Yeah. I, no, I feel it's probably more than adequate.
I think that's what I was thinking.
Okay. So we have an application on the floor for the special use permit. Um, I believe we need to declare ourselves as lead agency before we start. And then Kim.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
To clarify, so leave it. Second?
I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think that's all we have.
That's all we have to do.
You want to read it?
I will read it, though. It's not a problem. Let me just step this one straight away. We are official. Okay. You want to read the top page or you want me to just read the seeker? Okay, no problem.
If you want to read what that, okay.
I will do that also, so everybody knows what it is.
Read it into the record.
I will read it into the record. The special application, the date of application was 4/3/2024. The applicant name is Valerie Bergeretti, 31 Third Street, Narrowsburg, New York. Jordan Sullivan, 6606, New York, 97 Narrowsburg, New York. The owner is Kevin Bergeretti, 178 Delaware Drive, Narrowsburg, New York. The applicant requests a special use permit as required by the article, uh, section 4.0, Schedule District, so on and so forth, of the Town of Tustin zoning law described below. Change of use from office space to food service. No cooking equipment needed. Okay. And now we will begin. The name of the action, I'm going to read the seeker. The name of the action or project. Nectar Juice Bar, project location, 6606, New York, there's 97 Narrowsburg, New York, 12764. The brief description of proposed action. The lower level of the commercial space was previously occupied a law office. We would like to operate a food business out of this space. The services would focus on smoothies, achievable, and fresh juices. No gas slash frame required. No frying or cooking will be involved. Just refrigeration, freezing, blended juices. The name of the applicant or sponsor, Valerie Bergeretti and Jordan Sullivan. And the vows address is 31 Third Street, Narrowsburg, New York. And Jordan's address is 6606, New York, there's 97 Narrowsburg, New York, 12764. Does the, I'm going to read now, number one. Does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of the plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule, or regulation? They checked yes. If yes, attach a narrative description of the intent of the proposed environmental resources that may be affecting the municipality and proceed to part two. If no, continue to question two. Number two, does the proposed action require a permit, approval, or funding from any other governmental agency? They checked no. Number three, A, a total acreage of the site of the proposed action, they put point five acres. B, total acreage to be physically disturbed, they put zero. C, total acreage, project site, and continuous properties owned or controlled by the applicant or project sponsor, non-applicable. Number four, check will land use that occur or adjoining to or near the proposed action. They checked forest and commercial and residential. Any comments? Nope. Five, is the proposed action a permitted, 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 thank you, used under the zoning regulations? They checked yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, non-applicable. Number six, is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing building or natural landscape? They checked yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state-listed critical environmental area? They checked no. Number eight, will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above present level?
Can we go back to number seven?
Yeah, we should. It says in the side of the proposed action, located in or does not enjoy a state-listed critical environmental area. You checked no. It would be yes. Want me to do that? Fine.
Bald eagles.
Bald eagle.
Maybe snakes.
I would say.
I don't think that in the one, the hillside, they identified any, but they must be there.
Okay. Okay.
So when we say, uh...
Yes, yes, bald eagle. Number eight, A, will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above the present level? And we said?
No.
Yeah. Because I've been. B, eight B, are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? No. C, are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available or near the site of the proposed action? We said.
Yes.
It's a base.
Okay. Number nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? If the proposed action will exceed requirements, describe design, features, and technology. They checked yes, and the answer they, uh, provide is the space will meet all health codes, building codes, and fire safety standards. But number 10, will the proposed action connect to an existing public slash private water supply? They checked yes.
Excuse me, but, um, that building is on a well, but a half-town sewer.
Okay. So what do you want to do?
That should be no business.
It should be.
Public, private, private, public.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna leave that?
I believe so.
I would think so also.
I think if you have number 11, it's the wastewater.
Water, right. Will the proposed act and connect to existing wastewater utilities? They said yes. Good.
Okay.
I'm just.
Because they're on their own well, but it's existing, so.
Number 12, A, does the project site contain or is it substantially contiguous to a building, architectural site, or district which is listed on the National State Register of Historic Places? Or that has been determined by the Commission of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of the Historic Places? They checked no.
Ward Delaware?
That's just a museum. It's not really a historic site. I would think.
I would think, yes.
Well, anybody disagree with that?
No.
I was questioning the same. I was wondering the same thing when... What is it?
A historic site of Ward Delaware was in.
Yeah.
Relocated with the stadium.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going, let it be. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent in an area designed designated as a sensitive for architectural archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? They didn't check it, so I'm gonna put.
I would say no. Anybody object to no?
No. Oh, it's been, does any portion, number 13, sorry, 13A. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining to the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by federal, state, or local agency?
No.
They checked.
I don't like that now.
I don't either.
Joining. Yeah, but it's not their property.
Leave it.
Read it again carefully.
Let me read it again. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or land adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency?
I guess no is right.
B, would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? They checked no. Number 14, we're being very... I apologize, those on Zoom, I'm trying to keep up. Okay. I'll read a little slower. No, no, you're gonna do this. Number 14, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. Check all that abroad. They checked forest. And out with it. Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Number 15, does the site proposed action contain any species of animal, associated habitats, listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? They checked no. Okay?
Uh, I think I can change that to a yes.
Because the eagles are right there, and the bald eagles, and... I'm just waiting for comments.
So, yeah, yes.
Yeah. Name of the eagle? Yeah. Is the project site located in a 100-year flood plain? They checked no. Number 17, will the proposed action create storm water discharge either from point or non-point sources? They checked no. I'm going to the next question. Number 18, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? Example, retention pond, waste, lagoon, lagoon, or dam? And they checked no. Number 19, has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the location of any active or closed solid waste management facility? They checked no. Number 20, has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediation, ongoing, or completed for hazard waste? They checked no. They wrote, I certify that the information provided above is true and accurate to the best of my knowledge. And the applicant's sponsored name is Valerie Bergeretti, Jordan Sullivan, 4th slash 324, signature Valerie, and Jordan, and their owner, operator.
Okay, uh, we're going to take action on part one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
No. Can we take action when we get to 10? Now, we don't have, as such, a site plan showing the building, and I was hoping that this map would fill it, but it doesn't. And it doesn't show them the parking, so when we do the parking, it'll fill the building and your property, I hope. Because we're gonna be stalled if we don't have that. Okay? Somebody's gotta draw it up. The notes for helping draw things.
We have a survey. We do, um, Gary Packer.
Yeah. And that probably would show the building.
Oh, absolutely.
So if we can make sure we get a copy of that here before our public hearing happens. And that'll also show the area then that's allowed for parking, so that would be good.
When are you planning on, um, resurfacing the driveway?
On approval of this. So I don't... I mean, I, I... Is there any requirements for you on that?
No, it's just it's... When that was done and showing the building and showing the lined-out parking spaces.
Right.
Just for public delineation.
I mean, I guess you have to, pending tonight's decision, well. You know, we don't make a decision, but, um, pending next month's decision, when you give me, if you get your approval, it'd be contingent that the parking lot get done and the lines be put in it, right? Because you're gonna show us how many spaces and... Well, from a owner's standpoint of the building, then I should just go ahead with that now anyway, then. That's up to you, yeah, because you'd probably want to pay for whatever you're going to do with it. Well, I mean, whatever goes in there. Yeah, exactly. Okay. Because it's not this, something else you'd want to have your parking paved, most likely. Okay. But after I, excuse me, but after I paved the parking lot, it's not that you can come back to me and say, well, we wanted you to do this, or do I have to show you how the parking lot is gonna be paved? I plan on paving the whole thing. You need to show us the parking spaces. Okay. You need a certain number of spaces and your handicap spaces delineated on it, which would be hard to do on the gravel, working like a red blacktop. But, you know, according to the square footage of the building, how many spaces you've got that does have adequate. And whoever does the paving should know that. That has nothing to do with who's paving. Has to do with your application here. Ackable, I mean, isn't it? Okay.
Is my microphone on? Um, hi, Dad. Whoever you contact, can't they maybe give us a drawing of what the layout they plan to do would be, and then we submit that with the paperwork so they can review it?
Okay. Does the town have a recommendation on favor? No. Okay, whoever you can get to do it, I guess. I don't even know how the, the last time I used Herman, I don't even know how Herman's doing. Well, his son probably is still paving. Herman doesn't feel well. Yeah. But he's still with her. Yes. Okay.
So my suggestion, or I think that what you need to do is just get a hold of Jim Crowley and ask him because it's the square footage and what you're going to have, and we have it in our zoning, and it shows how many spaces you need. So before you do anything, I mean, not that you're not.
The space will exceed whatever.
Absolutely, but just to make sure.
Okay. No, in this sense that, you know, it's only really gonna apply to the seating area.
Right, that's what it is.
It's your storage areas and stuff like that don't, really shouldn't be contained in your square footage. Okay. So, I mean, that's in your favor.
Right.
To do it that way, because you need less spaces.
But just make sure you talk to them, that's all, and make sure it's up to code.
Actually, I think, didn't Jocelyn send you a request to do that, Bill?
Um, she told us that you guys might require us to have the parking lot paved. She didn't really know. She wasn't clear on what our requirements would be.
Number of spaces is all we're interested in. I don't care whether you paved or not. So you deduct, excuse me, you deduct the, the work area and the bathroom area out of that, and then whatever the seating area is? I think so. You can check the, uh, designer.
Or the capacity, seating capacity, maybe.
Well, yeah, but it's done by square footage in our zoning. For restaurants, so many square feet, you need so many parking spaces.
Okay.
Okay, so you just look it up in there and make sure it's right.
What do you mean, look it up? Where would I look that up?
In the zoning, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And Jocelyn will help you with that if you need it.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't bring the book.
I didn't.
Crystal put that book together, and it's got everything, so now you need a truck to move it.
I'm new to writing these things down, but I put a little note in to ask Jocelyn if she can, Jocelyn or Jim Crowley, let us know how many parking places you will need for the space that you are presenting to the planning board, and then this way I can help present that information to the planning board and to you, Jordan, and to your father.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're most welcome.
We'll get through it.
We'll get through it. We're on your side, at least I am.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, we've read part one. Everybody happy with what? I don't think we need a motion on that.
It would be not. Um, what are the opinions that you all agree on the thing? Oh.
Okay, well, I'll take a motion that we accept, think of part one as changed and amended during the reading.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, application as amended.
I'll say this. The seeker.
That would be great.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's move on to part two, which is our part about the impacts. Are you still able to read or you've done?
No, I'll read it. Why not? I don't have a part two.
You don't have one?
I'll get my. Well, I can read it.
Yeah, you're gonna put it up.
Yeah, yes.
And you want me to check the book?
You'll check. I'll read, you check. One, three. You want? Ready? Yep. All righty, we're going to read part two, predicted by lead agency, which we made a motion for earlier. I was expecting. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
I would answer no, or small impact, because it's a specially permitted use in that district.
Number two, will the proposed action result in the change in the use or the intensity of the use of land?
Small or moderate?
Will the proposed? Small or moderate? Small.
Well, they changed the form, okay.
Which one? I'm trying to make sense, right?
I'm sorry, moderate got moved over. It needs to be on the left side.
Okay. Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
Let's just say no. It's easier.
Just stop me if anybody wants to respond on the board. Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristic to cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Number five, will the proposed action result in the adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affecting existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it failed to incorporate reasonable availability, available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunity?
No.
No.
Number seven, will the... I apologize, I realized I was not sharing that. Okay. The voucher. Okay, we're up to number seven. Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supply?
No.
B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Nope. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of... Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Number nine, will the proposed action result in the adverse change to natural resources? Sample wetlands, water bodies, groundwater and quality for a farm?
No.
No. Number ten, will the proposed act and result in the increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problem?
Now, I spoke through the highway digital station.
Number eleven, will the proposed act and create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Which number?
Okay, so we have found all small or no impacts on number two. So we'll move on to part three, which we complete. And we have to check a box. And we'll check the second box, I believe, check this box if you have determined based on the information analysis above. Of any supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. And since we had all knows that should be appropriate, right? All right, so we need a motion to accept the seeker. And with the small to no impact.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Our motion on the floor in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, we're filling this form.
Um, who is signing? Can you pronounce campaign or can?
Can.
Okay, now. This will need to go to UDC, so maybe they have to do that. And the county.
Okay.
But hopefully she has a two thirty line form that she can do one. So at this point. We are ready to set a public hearing. And then we'll be contingent on us receiving our parking plan. Before we.
Yeah.
During that hearing.
Okay.
I'm very okay with getting it that way. All right. So our next meeting is, maybe it's not here. Yeah. It's May twenty-third, it's grievance day, but I know what day it is.
And we're sending a preliminary?
No, you don't use that word anymore. Twenty-third.
No.
The fourth, oh, we're the fourth, that's the third, yeah.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, twenty-eighth, right.
Memorial Day.
That's good, so we don't have. Maybe we do. Whatever we do. Yeah, we have to have it upstairs because planning goes on down here.
Well, you have people coming?
Yeah, we have to do it last year too.
You know the state.
Wondered if that's waiting hall. It should be adequate. I don't know if back and table upstairs, if that's still there.
What's she, on the second floor?
Yeah.
That that table is there, yeah, you can do it up there in that one.
Yeah, but we don't like. Right.
What time is that meeting?
Two to four and six to eight.
You can, you have enough time to move this meeting to a Wednesday evening if you need to.
Planning for a meeting?
Yeah. If I, I can.
That would solve the problem, no?
It would.
About the twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Correct.
So anybody with the board have a problem with moving one day? No? Steve, you okay with that, doing one day, Fran? The twenty-ninth, because of the twenty-eighth of May? Okay. All right, so let's set a public hearing then for May twenty-ninth at seven thirty P M, which is a Wednesday.
I need a motion a second to change that.
Okay, I accept the motion on the floor to change our meeting due to the conflict of the meeting room usage to May twenty-ninth, Wednesday. I'll make that one.
I said.
What time?
I have a second, Barry.
I did not hear it, Barry, you're like.
A mouse? Okay, we got a motion a second on the floor to change our meeting to Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. Crystal takes care of all that kind of legal.
Yep.
Oregon. All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, object? Nice. All right, everybody approved, so that's carried, and then uh instead our public hearing for seven thirty that night.
And um.
Yes.
About the notices?
Yes, the notices, we're doing those.
Isn't four taking it?
No. Certified, return receipt requested, we want the receipts back, and the thing that you sent it at the meeting.
That we would uh.
At a hundred feet, all directed. You're lucky, you've got one big parcel around that takes care of a lot on some side. Got across the road to do. And you own one of them, so. He lives upstairs.
We'll send you a little where the board is including the field link for your letter.
Okay, so you'll provide that to.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's um, that's just to property owners, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you said a hundred feet? Five hundred feet, okay.
So you're good in the back and sides, basically, that's one, but the other side you pick up a few.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Like Pete's Market will probably be in and so on.
Right.
Maybe across Kirk Road, so.
Okay, and we.
Around there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Any other business that anybody has for us meeting tonight? We do, but anybody from public care to make a comment?
Do you have to ask for the fact except for one?
Did they ask that?
They agree to the changes that you made.
Okay. Is there any objection, Steve, to any of the changes we made in part one or Fran?
No.
No. You understood why we were thinking the way we were thinking, I hope.
Hundred percent.
Okay, good. So you raise an agreement, thank you, Chris. Covering all bases, which is a great job, we appreciate that.
Anybody have, and we don't have to have a public phone.
Well, we asked Kim why the same thing, he's the public tonight. No, no public comment, any board comments?
No.
Any comments on Zoom?
Any comments from Zoom? I have one comment. Okay. You know, as landlord in Narrowsburg, I find out to duplicate anything else that's in Narrowsburg. So try and find a tenant that fits the requirement to not have an impact. To, to, you know, be something that the town would like. It's not easy sometimes. Yeah. And then coming up with the, you know, the idea that we had and coming up with a business plan for it. And, you know, two people being on board that you didn't want to do it. You know, I was, I feel very fortunate that everything fell into place. Yeah. And that the board is gonna accept it as well, you know, once everything you know, goes with the trend. But, you know, I I don't want to take, I mean, it makes a good spot for a liquor store. Makes a good spot for a lingerie, makes a good spot for a lot of things, but that's not what I want to do with it, I want something to be that's gonna benefit the town that nobody else is already doing. That's not easy. Certainly, we would like a nail salon. How are we gonna get, you know? Not that easy to put together. I don't think we have enough people here to support it.
Steve, we're rolling.
But in the back room.
It's open on Saturday, I can bring my wife, she'll definitely come.
Be in luck. My question is that once the meeting on May twenty-ninth, how soon thereafter can they be operational?
The thirtieth?
Really, next day?
Yeah, once we approve of your permit, you're good to go.
The bowl as well.
Would there not be a public? After he, they turn in their uh all the letters they send out and.
That's for the public hearing, which is May twenty-ninth, right? We'll be done with that, we'll have action on it by the board, either for or against. And once we determine our action.
And that's as long as they have the parking studied up, right?
Right, because we need to see that. What determines the radius that you go from for the five hundred feet to center of the building? No, the edge of the property line, the edge of them, the far corner.
Okay.
Okay, so from each outer end?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay, I got it.
Can help you with that.
Yeah.
I have a question also about the the C of O, so the C of O can be turned around that quickly the next day?
No, that's.
After the meeting?
That's up to Jim. He can, he can act on it once he has our approval, that's okay.
Okay.
I don't know what days he's in or what his schedule is.
Mm-hmm, and I didn't know how long that takes to put together.
I don't.
Hmm, okay.
But, you know, you've already submitted the application through his department and didn't have a an issue that you needed to fix other than telling you about telling us the parking, I think you're okay.
Okay.
And I hope that he would have mentioned something if he had a problem with it. He has an issue.
Thank you.
Things that need to be rectified in the building, and that would be the obstacle.
Yeah.
But as far as once they're doing this, once I take care of whatever I take care of in the building, I don't think there will be. I think you're right.
Would it take the whole building to be considered C of O? Since it's.
Don't bring it up here. Please, we have enough difficulty.
You're just.
You know.
The change of use.
It's hard to delineate that. We give the permission, but we're not the enforcement agency. And it's hard to keep that in mind, but that's what it really is.
We're only allowing, we're only stating that the, you know, change of use of the property.
The rest is up to Jim to determine that it's. You didn't make Jordan's book.
Oh, do you wanna?
Did you have? Did you have a? Did you have a presentation of what it is?
I think she wanted to show you guys the uh floor plan.
Consider that withdrawn. Well, I thought you've had made nice colored pictures here, remember?
Your picture was self-explanatory, and you need this nine number bullet, it's very hard to make them.
Yes.
Action to the best.
Yeah. Okay, are you sure you don't want to speak? This all, we'd love to turn his head towards you and listen to you. Okay, I'll take it at its point. Everybody but Valerie had anything else, right? We're all good.
Let's go back to that.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Mike made the motion to adjourn. Aye, I'll second. All in favor?